All right, everybody. Good evening. Apologies for the slight delay in starting the public meeting. May I call the Board of Education meeting of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on Thursday, April 11th, 2024, in compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act? Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the Act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in a newspaper and on the district website on January 17th, 2024. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on April 4th, 2024. The Daily Record, Star Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany, Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per bylaw 0168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and our video on the Go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement, and professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Barrios?
Here.
Mrs. Cogan?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Raye?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Dr. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Golderer?
Here.
Mr. Chaffo?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, we will move right on to student committee reports. I don't see Emily, so Suneeta, would you like to give the report for the hills?
Yep. Hi, everyone. I hope you all had a great spring break. Before break, we had our annual spring pep rally on the last day before break, celebrating all the spring athletes. We had games like sack race, egg race, and speed pitch, and then we had a spirit week leading up to it, Monday being beach day, Tuesday being aesthetics day, with each grade dressing up as a different era of fashion, Wednesday as Rhyme Without Reason, and Friday, I mean Thursday, as Viking Nation Day. And then on March 26th, the PHHS athletic department had an open house welcoming incoming eighth grade student athletes and their parents. These eighth graders were able to circulate through the gym and meet coaches for the sports and current student athletes for all the different sports we offer at PHHS. The solar eclipse was on Monday, and we were told the safety guidelines many times not to look at the sun. The Italian Five class attended multicultural day at Mount Tabor on Thursday, March 21st. The students worked in groups and created three interactive presentations to engage students regarding Italian culture. One group taught a traditional dance, another showed objects and artifacts that represented Italian culture, and then the third group taught about Italian artists, landmarks, and music. Over spring break, we had a trip to Italy hosted by our Italian teacher, Dr. Bavacqua, and was open to upperclassmen, I believe, and they went all of spring break to cities such as Rome, Venice, and Florence, and Pisa. There is a swap for sustainable planet clothing drive at the main branch of the Parsippany Library from 12 to 4:00 PM, April 13th, 2024. All items should be in excellent condition as if you were exchanging them with a close friend, and these items include dresses, blouses, jackets, and they should be dry cleaned or have no stains, party dresses such as homecoming or prom, formal blouses, purses, handbags, and/or accessories. On Tuesday, motivational speakers Alvaro and Sean came to speak to us about fire safety. They are burn survivors of the Seton Hall fires that happened on January 19th, 2000, and they also were awarded the Seton Hall Humanitarian Award winners. They showed us a documentary describing their experiences and what happened that night, and then talked to us more about why colleges require certain safety measures. And then on Friday, we have the PHHS Winter Guard putting on a friends and family show to show their program. And then next Friday, we have our annual Indian Cultural Club show at 6:00. Tickets are $7 at the door, but $5 if you preorder. And then the show includes great dances, partner dances, garba, genre dances, and a skit made featuring the board. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Suneeta, board members? No? Thank you so much for that report. I really appreciate it. Is there any correspondence to come before the board?
No.
Okay, Suneeta. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Mr. Barrios?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just give me one second. I'm following up with you. So this past Tuesday, I attended the presentation of the budget for the township. It was the mayor's presentation, including the department heads, and I was just curious, since the budget has already been presented, if you or anybody in the district has heard from the mayor as relates to the pilot, the current pilots that are in play, and the ones that are to be in play that were approved back in 2021, and then again in 2023.
Mr. Barrios, as I reported a few meetings ago, the mayor has made public overtures about discussing pilots with the board, and I'll paraphrase his comments, being along the lines of the township needs to get its state aid allocation from the state, which they've gotten. I've heard publicly from the mayor that he needs to discuss the township budget with Council President Karifi prior to any discussions with the board. I informally saw the mayor at a neighborhood watch group about two months ago, at which point he invited me to reach out to him to have dinner, which I did via text, and I received no text back from him, and I did follow up. The board has sent communications to him asking to enter into discussions about pilot funding, to which, at least in 2024, none of those were answered. I met informally with the council vice president, and I know other board members also met informally with the council vice president. So that's a long way of saying absolutely not.
So, thank you, Mr. President, and I guess, you know, for me, as not just an elected official of this town, I was elected, no matter what anybody else says, it's frustrating because as I sat at the presentation, this is the budget, the presentation is called the simple budget. It's aptly named because there's nothing on here, okay? I've read every page in this budget. What I can tell you is that there is not a nickel for the Board of Education as related to the pilots, not a dollar. If you remember to my fellow board members, for those of us who attended these meetings, starting in November, November 9th, when the town council introduced these pilots, myself, President Chaffo, I think Ms. Cogan was there, a few of us that attended, we all went to the mic and said, what about the school district? This is going to impact the school district, and we were told, we're going to get to the school districts, we're going to talk to you. We met on the 9th. We met, we went through to every council meeting up until December 5th, when it was final approval, and again, we asked, were we going to have a conversation? We would promise to be a conversation. December 28th, at the PAL building, Mr. President, there was a town council meeting with over 800 people at the PAL, 800 taxpaying citizens, and we all stood online. We were there for seven hours, and again, we asked, and again, we were told, we would get to you. Has not happened. We have had public statements from the mayor's office, more preferably the mayor, saying that the Board of Education has provided misinformation, the Board of Education is lying, the Board of Education is doing everything but representing its constituents. So I guess my point is, is that based on this preliminary budget presentation this on the 9th, and I believe on the 16th, maybe it's the 17th, I forget, the next council meeting, there will be what is called the formal presentation, which I really don't know what that means, but I will be there. The bottom line is, it's obviously and apparent that the district is not going to see any, anything at this point in time from the mayor's office or the council, well, more preferably the mayor's office, as relating to these pilots. Now, maybe that's down the road a year from today, two years from today, but, you know, our budget is already presented to the public, we're going to vote on our budget on the 25th, we have our constraints, and the shame of it is, is that I'm only sitting in this seat for another couple of years, Mr. President, as you know, but this district will go on and on long after I'm gone, and this district will pay the price for a 30-year unfunded township mandate to this district, in which we're going to have to, the district and the board, with this board, the future boards, are going to have to make some very, very hard choices, and I'm disappointed, as someone who has supported this mayor from the day he first ran for town council, I cannot understand why we're sitting here asking, begging for a meeting. You know, there was a, and I'm sorry for going on, but there was a press release late March in which, and I quote, "Mayor Barbario welcomes a meeting with the school board just as he has reached out last fall to discuss the pilot projects prior to them being considered by the town council. The township looks forward to well-intentioned and meaningful discussions aimed at delivering optimal services to taxpayers in a financially prudent manner." That hasn't happened, unless I was asleep when it happened. So, Mr. President, I don't know what the next steps are, and I really am sorry for taking up time, but I have to say that as a member of this board, taxpayer, and someone who lived in this town since 1990, I can't be any more disappointed than I am sitting here having this discussion with you. Is there any way at this point in time, since we're not going to get, doesn't appear we're going to get any movement of the mayor's office, and the town council ultimately has to approve their budget, no matter what it looks like, maybe at this point in time, we just reach out directly to town council leadership, and I'm more focusing more on President Karifi, because as you know, Vice President Neglia, and former Board of Ed President Neglia, sat at that podium and said, we will meet, we will get this resolved, and that has not happened either. So maybe, just maybe, we can have this conversation with President Karifi, and maybe we can get some movement on the council side. Ultimately, they do not present the budget, I understand that, they vote on the budget, but maybe there is a way where we can at least, ultimately, we are servicing the same taxpayers in this town, I know, and schoolchildren, and facilities, and there's so much involved to putting these things together, and I'm just sitting here, and I'm just saying to myself, I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone, like something, someone's going to wake me up and say, you know, April Fools, we're kidding, and it's not happening. So I, that's my request, because, you know, as being on this board for nine-plus years, it's just amazing to me that we're here, and I don't understand why, so I'll be quiet for now. Thank you.
Tim, I think that was, you know, beautifully said, a little long-winded, as you suggested, but beautifully said nonetheless. I have a couple of comments to make to Tim's points, but any other board members would like to just, you know, discuss their concerns regarding what's potentially 1,000, you know, new students over the next few years due to these residential developments and concerns that they have, especially when a lot of these developments are under a pilot agreement, and there's no funding available. I see the vice president raising her hand. Yes, Susie.
I always have something to say, but with respect to this, I did attend the budget presentation at the town hall, and I was very concerned because, one, of course, we all know that there was no money for the, for the school district and their budget coming from, you know, any pilots that they have approved, but I don't, and this is, again, my opinion, is that we as a township don't, you know, don't even have any business getting into these negotiations with these pilots that have already been approved, because everything that I heard during, from every single administrator that presented that night was that they don't have enough employees to do the work, hence the reason why their, you know, their department that approves or takes care of the permits doesn't function the well that, the way that it should. The same thing with the recycling department. Every single department touted that they did not have enough employees and that they all need to hire people, and that other districts or other townships are taking away the, some of the employees that they have because they're paying them more money. So in general, we don't have enough people to support the infrastructure we currently have. What's going to happen with the 1,000 and plus people that are, and I'm not talking about 1,000 and plus just students, I'm talking about people in general to our township. And, you know, even currently, they're outsourcing certain jobs to companies outside, you know, because, again, they don't have enough employees. And they were, they were asked a direct question, one of them was asked a direct question with respect to, one of the administrators was asked a direct question as to what do they foresee happening with all the new roads they're going to be needing, and they said, we have no good resources to handle this, and, and that's concerning. So let's move on to the, you know, let's move on to our school district. You know, we, we don't go out, and we're not a profit-making entity. We don't have the opportunity or the ability, as the township does, to go and, and create any type of business or any type of money source. And we, we, thank God, we educate every child, and we don't question anything, we, whatever child comes in, we educate them, and that is our job, you know, and, and that's okay, but for them to say, which is correct, that everything that we, you know, every single penny that we say is taxable for the school district, we get 100%, that is true, but when you have an influx of, say, 60 or even 1,000 new students, okay, you need more teachers, you need to, you know, you need the room, you need the space, you need, you know, desks, furnishings, everything that you could possibly think of, and that is not part of the current budget, you know, and we are, you know, so that even though it is true that we get 100% of whatever we budget for, we can't budget for kids that are not in our district this year, and even next year when they come and they say, okay, we have another 200 students, well, we can't raise the budget to meet those 200 students because we are capped at 2% or we have to go for a referendum. And the sad part about this is that our current mayor loves to say over and over again how he grew up in this, you know, how he grew up in Parsipony, and, you know, he always loved Parsipony, and how he wanted to be the mayor of Parsipony, yet he, where is he going to be in 30 years? You know, it's like, can we go after him, you know, personally, when he ruins our school district, our district, our township, or, you know, our town, in, you know, within the next five years, because it's going to be noticeable then, you know, and, and I'm just, truthfully, sometimes I feel powerless, because we have no control over what they are negotiating over there, because he doesn't want to let us have that. And for whatever reason that the township is doing this, and it saddens me that he nor any one of the town council members that, that's voted yes to this really care, because we have said it, and all they do is call us liars, and none of them have come and asked us to explain to them what we mean. So I'm sorry.
That was spot on, Susie. Thank you. Jack?
Thank you. Just to add to what you were saying about the failing of powerlessness, we went to several of the town council meetings, and, and I was just astounded by the level of intransigence that was, that I felt. You know, we, many points were raised that were good points and should have been taken into consideration as far as structuring a pilot, the term, all we're hearing about is 30-year terms. Other towns have done pilots as short as 10 years. We're locking in our town for decades, for three, potentially three decades, in a deal where we're selling the bottom of the market. We are, this town is ideally located, it has a terrific road system, highways coming in and out of town, and just the level of intransigence has been horrible. And I'd just like to say to the public, you know, when, when you make public comments to, to the board, we do listen, and, and I can think of many instances, specific examples last year, I haven't been on the board that long, only a year and a half, but we have incorporated comments from the public into our policies, and so we do listen, and, and we encourage the public to speak up, and we listen and try and incorporate, but we saw nothing of that from the, from the town council and from the mayor's office.
Allison?
I just wanted to say that I think it's going to become very clear, very quickly, how much this is actually going to impact our schools, because I believe 1515, at least, maybe one of the other ones, will be open during this next school year, and all those children will be coming, and there has been, as Mr. Barrios said, absolutely no funding attached to those children. So I, I don't think it's going to take long to feel the tangible effects of what this is going to be. And then also on the new regulation from the state that came in, changing the Affordable Care mandates for the next few years, a lot has been said about the township has to come up with a report on how they can meet those obligations, and I would just ask that as part of our request for meetings regarding the new developments, that we also request to be at the table when they are having the meetings, discussing how to put that report together on what infrastructure, what, what services are available to support housing going forward.
Wendy?
Thank you. I just wanted to add to some of those specific hurting points and kind of be, maybe lay out things that can, are likely to occur when we have more students and the same or even fewer resources. First off, I have immense faith in our educational staff, and I know our teachers do amazing work, but we are going to be asking them to do more with less, more students in their classroom, less space to work with, less additional supports outside of the classroom, such as these amazing enrichment programs. We may, you know, we will, of course, dedicate ourselves to ensuring that each student is effectively educated. Where does that money come from? Additional programming, extracurriculars. We have sent students, we're sending students this year to national programming across the country. That isn't going to be possible. So what happens here is, if we don't have additional support, this is going to be felt immediately by our students and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else like to make comment? I've known many of you for a long time who are on this board, and I've known some of you for a shorter time, but I'm, you know, getting to know you. And one of the things I'll say is, none of the people who sit, who are sitting up here are alarmists. We're, we're just not. We take data, we analyze it, we have a tremendous administrative staff that executes the academic educational plans for the district. And I'm pretty patient, my wife might disagree with me, but I'm generally pretty patient, and I, and I like to allow people to have the opportunity to digest information and come to a conclusion that's mutually beneficial for both sides. And I think in terms of our discussions with the township's governing body and the mayor, my patience has reached the end, and I don't, I don't know that there's much more that we can do to encourage an open dialogue between, you know, the two, the two major elected bodies in this town to talk about this issue, which, as I think Allison alluded to, you know, this year, I think we have a few enrollments, not physical students in classes, but we have a few enrollments from these, from these residential developments. Next year, we're actually going to start seeing real children showing up in classrooms. We talked to Dr. Sutter earlier this evening, and, you know, I'm comforted, and we'll, we'll send a leadership meeting minutes for our next board meeting, but, you know, Dr. Sutter has a plan to begin absorbing some of these students, a lot of it's hinging on the development that we're doing at Littleton by adding classrooms through our own operating budget, not going to the taxpayers for more funding, but finding ways to increase our space. But this district is at capacity in terms of classroom space. We can't simply add more, more rooms, because we don't, we don't have them to add. So, you know, I, I'll let you figure out, if we have more students and we can't add more classes and teachers, what happens to existing classroom size. We'll, we'll give it one more shot, and we'll, we'll make one more communication to the mayor, and we'll copy the council on that communication, and give, give them the opportunity to do what's right for the students of this district, because Mayor Barbario will, will become known as the mayor that tanked this school district if he does not agree to fund what we are estimating will be 1,000 kids over the next several years as, as a result of these residential developments. That's the fact. So we're going to give him one more opportunity, and if he doesn't come to the table, you know, this, this school district goes to DEFCON 4, and we will have to do what we need to do to protect the students of this district. I don't want to go there, but I think we're, we're at a position now where we have no choice. Okay, thank you. Any other unfinished business?
Oh, I do. Sorry.
Yes, Sue.
I would, I just wanted to remind the board that we do have to finish or complete our self-evaluations, our board self-evaluations before April 30th. We could just, all we have to do is go in NJSBA and log in and, and start the board self-evaluations, and I have asked, before April 30th, and I have asked Mr. Raye if he could please make some time to sit with Dr. Wright to, to go over the, how to do the board self-evaluation, okay? Thank you.
Do you have a question? I think we reported this out in critical issues at last meeting with the timeline for the self-eval, and the NJSBA website is up and running, so you can do that at your convenience. Any other unfinished business? No? Okay, thank you for a very good discussion, I appreciate that. We'll move on to committee reports, and I just want to, before we go into that, thank Susie for presiding over the last meeting. I was under the weather with the flu, so I attended via telephone, but really wasn't able to talk without coughing, so thank you, Susie, for, for doing that. Let's give a brief report on some of notable items that's happened over the last four weeks at this point. We talked a lot about pilots, so I'm not going to go too much more into the pilot programs. The district has entered into a contract with a demographer that prepared our 2020 report, and Robin Tedesco is working with the demographer to provide them with data so they can update the report for 2024, especially given what we know now in terms of our residential developments. I want to thank the Communications Committee, and I'll give a shout out specifically to Wendy for creating- Wendy for creating a one-page document with a number of helpful facts. And just for the public's edification, on the district website, there is a residential development link that's going to be permanently there and you can find that information as well as other FAQs regarding how the district is handling residential development and what our, what our plans are. We have had members of the public submit questions to the link that's there and we answer those questions as soon as we can. Our policy committee is researching any policies that maybe need a revision due to increased enrollment and given that we're at capacity with classrooms. I think that's all I want to say about pilots. Dr. Sutter, you attended a unification drill in Mount Olive. Can you just let us know what that, was it out?
Sure. Thank you, President Chaffo. It was actually at Roxbury High School. What happened was Mount Olive High School was practicing a reunification drill, so they used Rock, Roxbury High School as their central location. They practiced with 200 volunteer students. They, Roxbury went to Mount Olive High School, bused them down to Roxbury. It was led by their, their chief of school security, Mr. Karifi. He was very well organized. The administration was there, they had scenarios in case of a situation would occur. They had EMS on hand, they had counselors on hand and parents came from Mount Olive to pick up their children. So it was a very good learning experience for me and for the rest of the individuals that were there and I commend both Mount Olive and Roxbury and their chief of security, Mr. Karifi, for what he did. Thanks.
Thanks very much. I appreciate that. I think I forwarded you information from the NJ SBA on the education unsung heroes and did I send that to you? If I didn't, I apologize. Yeah, for Morris County, yeah, for education unsung heroes.
Yes, you did.
I did, okay. So you're looking into that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
We actually sent that out to the district staff, to all of our administrators. So there were some individuals that were going to sign that information.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Workshop 2024 dates have been announced, October 21st to October 24th. Joni in June will begin sending communications to us as board members, asking if we're interested in attending that. If you can spare a few days and go down to school boards, it's very educational, it's very enlightening, there's some great programs that they, that they host. Just a reminder to read the NJ SBA school board notes, there were a number of SEC decisions and I think even the commissioner of education recently weighed in on some of those decisions. There were seven ethics complaints and six advisory opinions regarding those complaints. So I always find those really interesting to read, so maybe you will too. Board self eval and superintendent's eval, we talked about that and we completed our board training last meeting, which was community engagement and I want to thanks, thanks Charlene Peterson for presenting that to us. Oh, yeah. So I believe there was a job fair today at Montclair State University and Mr. Ricker, maybe you can just talk about that a little bit? Thank you.
I'll bring this a little bit closer. Dr. Mulrooney and I went to Montclair State today. We met with probably 50 to 60 students that are graduating this spring. We collected over 40 resumes of students that fit the profile of what we're looking for. Many of them, probably most, if not all of them, will be brought in for interviews over the next few weeks. The nice thing and to kind of share with all of you and to share with the public was most of the students seemed very excited to apply for jobs in Parsippany. They talked about the supportive parents here, many of them had done student teaching here. They talked about the diversity in town. They talked about multiple things that made them very excited to apply to a job in Parsippany. And then at the end, Dr. Flores is their director of career planning. He came up to Dr. Mulrooney and I at the end of it and said, I think you guys had more traffic than any other district that was here. We probably were in the mix of about 50 or 60 school districts and we were packed from the minute we sat down until we packed up at the end of the day. And he just mentioned how those students, those soon-to-be graduates, so many of them have talked about wanting to work in Parsippany. So for, he told us for whatever reason, whatever we're doing, keep it up because Montclair State loves this partnership that we have with our student teachers and there's kids that really want to work here. So it was, it was nice to hear. It was a good productive day.
Any questions for Todd or Dennis on the job fair? Allison?
I just, you said 40 or 50 students came up to you and we'll start interviewing, but approximately how many teachers would we need next year? It's not like 100, right?
No, it's not. I think currently, I think we have 11 or 12 tenure-track positions that we're looking for, mostly due to retirements. And then we have probably at least another 12 to 15 long-term leave assignments. Our teachers are great about letting us know early when they have things that they can plan for and they're going to be out for a while. So we're already starting to look for some of those replacements for maternity leaves, medical leaves, things like that going into next year.
Thank you. Thank you both so much for attending that and representing the district, so I really appreciate it. I think we are now on to committee reports. I only have two listed here, but I think there were more minutes in our board documents, but start with Mr. Raya, the finance committee.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chaffo. The finance committee met on April 9th. Attended were myself, Mrs. Abraham, Mrs. Chappell, Mrs. Goldner, Mrs. Tedesco and Dr. Sutter. There were several topics on the agenda, one of which was the Pomtadian 2024-25 renewal. That is our food service contract for the new year. We are keeping the lunch prices hopefully with an increase of 2.5% for next year due to the increase in food prices. That seems like a pretty reasonable result if that's what we end up at. The health benefits broker, Doyle Alliance, is negotiating with health insurance providers for 2024-25. They are hoping to finish negotiations by the end of April. The budget was approved by the county for the school district budget. The 2024-25 budget was approved by the county. The final approval of this budget will be at the public hearing at the board meeting on April 20th.
Thank you, Jack. Any questions for Mr. Raya?
I would only like to add that the county approved the budget without any changes whatsoever.
Oh, yes. And again, I would like to thank Dr. Sutter, Mrs. Tedesco and their team on, you know, this was a very difficult process and, you know, because of the budget constraints imposed. So I thank them again for doing such a great job. Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yep.
No, I just have a liaison report, but if he has a question.
Do you have a question?
Just a quick question. The budget presentation that was done here, you know, when it was introduced, is still online access for the public?
Yes.
Yeah, it's still on the website.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
I have a liaison report from the Morris County Unstung Hero Program. First off, there were, I think there was three more opportunities for students to apply for money. I forget what the different, different.
There are three scholarships available, right? Yeah, sure.
Right, there's two scholarships that are going to be, their schools are going to be notified they can apply for. On, hold on. Okay. The, our, for the recognition, the committee got together after all the students were honored and the committee got together to decide which students were going to be awarded some money or scholarship money. And, you know, it was a very difficult, very difficult time for them. There were so many deserving that it was just unbelievable. I'm happy to announce that Emma Joyce from the Hills, she is a second place recipient and she will receive $1,000 at the Roxbury High School on May 2nd. So it was great to hear that she was going to be recognized, so it's just a wonderful program.
Thanks, Judy. Allison, buildings and grounds or?
I reported out on buildings and grounds last time, but the official minutes are available now so that you can look at them.
And Tim, you had the town council liaison. Do you want to say anything more regarding that? Okay, thank you very much.
I'm going to skip over all the good stuff. No, let me just touch on items other than pilots. In the mayor's report, a couple of areas that he stressed concerns about. There was, they're currently looking at, I believe it's coming in for next year, 2025, a series of tax appeals and a potential loss of revenue to the township of $468 million due to appeals from corporations. He emphasized the impact of the new tax appeals on the township's finances and highlighted the need for productive measures to mitigate these losses, AKA new pilots. The other issue that we, that was being discussed is affordable housing bill, the new one that came, was signed into law earlier, I believe it was this month. He expresses apprehension about the affordable housing legislation, which could lead to significant challenges for the, for Parsippany. He stressed the importance of developing a comprehensive plan to address affordable housing, including pilots, requirements while safeguarding the township interests. So I have actually, I pulled down the law, I pulled down the final legislation that was signed by the governor. I have read it cover to cover. I can make some sense of it. So what I did was I reached out to, as a private citizen, so I don't have to get yelled at, I reached out as a, to a sibling in Bergen and asked him if he could maybe give me like an executive summary of this thing so I could present it. He promised he would do that, so I have not heard from him yet, but I only saw him this past weekend, so that's my report.
Mr. Barrios? Mrs. Goldner?
Okay, well, the financial concerns, the $468 million due to appeals from corporations, if we, if any one of us loses our job, gets sick, whatever, we can appeal to the township and say, we can't pay our mortgage or we can't pay this, we need for you to negotiate terms with us. Unfortunately, the corporations can, meaning that even all of these pilots that they are, that they have approved, if they don't meet their, their vacancy capacities and such, these people could go back to them and negotiate better terms. Okay? So if he thinks this $468 million is bad, what does he think is going to happen when a lot of these places are not going to be able to reach the capacity, you know, that they have? I'm glad I wasn't at that meeting.
Thank you, Suzy. Sheepo?
I only have a liaison meeting minutes, but I'll have to give you the official minutes. I'll email it to you. I attended the Parsippany Education Foundation meeting on April 9th and I just wanted to read off the minutes that they provided to me. So once the call to order was made, the meeting, the motion to adopt the agenda from the, for that particular meeting was unanimously approved. The approval of the minutes from March 11th occurred shortly after. The treasurer's report was presented, let me see, and the motion to approve the treasurer's report and, which was also approved, there was no correspondence. And the most that we spoke about was about the golf outing, the Andrew, the Tom latest golf outing that's on May 14th. They did acquire another premier sponsor, so that's wonderful. And there was a lot of discussion around swag and different items that they want to offer to the golfers. There, that's basically the gist of what they were talking about, really just the ins and outs and details of planning their event and centerpieces and the dinner and whatnot and on and on. There's also some discussions about, you know, who's available to work that day out of the members so that the whole day will go very smoothly. So I encourage everyone who's able to go, whether you golf or not, to attend this very wonderful event that's been going on for quite a few years and I think it's, I'm looking forward to it myself. May 14th, yes. I think he's following up with the mayor's office to see if they're going to be sponsoring again this year. There's a, let me see if there's any other items in here. Most of it was just standard. The Spring Jeans Day, they collected about $955. That was on March 27th, I think it was. They have a food truck fundraiser coming up and I think Tara Snelling has sent a flyer to Dr. Mulrooney to distribute to the district. And let me see, scholarships, they have a couple of applications for both schools, so 19 applications came in from PHS and eight or nine from PHHS, which is amazing to hear. Let me see, no old business, no new business, and then the meeting adjourned. And I just wanted to repeat that the golf outing is May 14th and they have dinner afterward. So I hope everybody will be able to go. Thank you. And I'll be providing the official minutes.
Any questions for Sheepo? When's the food truck event due? June 4th?
June, yeah.
And where? Do you know where?
At the Hills. It's for the, when the teachers, I forget what day that's called, Professional Development Day.
Okay.
It's during the professional development.
I love a good food truck deal.
I'll keep you posted on which trucks.
Yeah, Michelle?
Could I, can I just clarify? Sorry. Go ahead. The golf outing, there's the golf and there's the dinner. You don't need to go to both, so that if you don't golf, you can just go to the dinner, right?
Correct.
Yes, I fit to the dinner, but I am not a golfer.
Neither am I.
Michelle, any?
Yes, I do. So yesterday I attended the Educational Services Commission of Morris County. There were a number of administrative things that they covered, which I won't bore you with, but there were two things I wanted to highlight to everyone. The first one would be just a reminder that they put the ask out for what shared services and professional support services that we need to make sure that they can budget for in next year's budget. So they're in the process of going out and gathering that information now. And then following up on the alternative school topic that came up in the last meeting that we had last month, Superintendent Valardi has got time scheduled with the Somerset Superintendent because they have an operating alternate school and they're going to be gathering information as to what works, what doesn't, cost, the intake process, the scope, how they decide, you know, what students are accepted, which are not. And then he can consider, you know, how they need to modify that to meet the needs of our students. So there's more to come on that and I just wanted to make sure you were aware. And that's really it.
Thank you. Any questions for Michelle? Wendy?
I have no reports.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are at the approval of, excuse me, executive session, regular minutes of March 28th, 2024. May have a motion to approve those minutes. Judy, seconded by Suzy. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldner?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Abstain, excuse me, abstain on the executive session, yes, on the regular session minutes. Superintendent's bulletin, Dr. Sutter?
Thank you, President Chaffo. First, I'd like to thank our own PHHS art teacher, Ms. Rachel Krill, for organizing an all-day blood drive on Monday, March 25th, at Parsippany Hills High School. A total of 45 individuals comprised of both Viking staff and students resulted in a collection of 26 pints of blood. The collection effort translates to potential assistance for up to 78 people in need. Also like to congratulate PHS student, Ms. Ektah Dotree, for winning first prize in the 28th Annual High School Essay Contest celebrating Women's History Month sponsored by the Elizabeth Ann Seaton Center for Women's Studies at Seton Hall University. The contest received several hundred entries from all over the state and the essays are a evaluated by several professors in the Women and Gender Studies Program, so this is a remarkable achievement. Congratulations to Ektah, and we would be remiss if we did not acknowledge Ektah's wonderful English teacher, Juliana Sanchez, who supports Ektah in her AP Language and AP Resource courses. Congratulations to the Parsippany Troy Hills School District for being selected by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation as one of the best communities in the nation for music education. The award program recognizes and celebrates outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who have made music education part of a well-rounded education. Designations are made to districts and schools that demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment and access to music education. The NAMM Foundation said, "We applaud your community's unwavering commitment to creating an environment where each child can learn and grow with music." Finally, as Sunika said earlier, the district would like to thank Brian Rickia and the Parsippany Troy Hills Fire Department for sponsoring an assembly titled "Fire: Safety for Seniors Preparing for College and Beyond" at both PHS and PHHS. Alvaro Lanas and Sean Simmons spoke about their experience concerning what they believed to be yet another false alarm at 4:30 in the morning as they slept in their dorm at Seton Hall University on January 19th, 2000. Turns out, a drunken fraternity prank went horribly wrong, causing a fire that claimed the lives of three freshman students and injuring fifty-eight others. Amongst the most severely burned were roommates Alvaro and Sean. Sean Alvaro spoke about fire prevention, fire safety, and overall responsibility, especially for incoming college freshmen. Tonight for your approval, we have Superintendent Bulletin items 1 through 18, with addendum and read-in items 19 through 25. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sutter. Any questions for the superintendent on the bulletin? Mrs. Mayer?
I don't have a question. I just want those of us who've been on the board for more than six years to remember back when we had to fight to keep our music program alive, and how it's flourished since, and that award is so gratifying, because had we not stepped up, we wouldn't have the music programs that we do. So it's a tribute to the board and the district for maintaining that enthusiasm.
Thank you for bringing that up, you're absolutely right, it was a hard-fought battle to, to be where we are, so thank you. Secretary's report, I'm sorry. Yes, Michelle, yes.
Sorry, just, that's a problem, just I wanted to echo that, because I think it is something that I know you've put a lot of time and effort into over the years, and it was really nice to see that, you know, it has made national recognition, so that's quite an achievement. But I also wanted to thank, thank everyone for arranging for the Seton Hall speakers to come. As a mother of a graduating senior, and hearing from her directly the impact that it had, it really resonated with the students, so hearing it firsthand from people who had gone through that experience, it really will be something that they remember and are very cautious of going forward, so thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, Wendy.
Would it be possible to read a copy of Ektah's award-winning essay?
I don't see why not, I can get that from Juliana Sanchez.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on the superintendent's bulletin? Sue, secretary's report, please.
Good evening, everyone. On tonight's secretary's report, we have the regular business motions, including the approval of several grant awards and the approval of a 54-passenger bus. Thank you.
Any questions on the secretary's report? No, hearing none. All right. We are now going to open the meeting up to the hearing of the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak, it will be helpful if you would like to address the board, please come up now, sign the book so that you're ready when the first speaker is finished. Oh, I forgot new business. All right, we'll go to new business, any new business? Dr. Wright?
I have two things. First, I would like to say Eid Mubarak to our Muslim community, and second, I would like to ask a follow-up on the professional development opportunity we had last week, or last meeting, on community engagement, and to say a request that we would like to develop a plan.
So taking the training from Mrs. Peterson on that topic, you, you'd like the board or the superintendent to take that to the next step and see how we can put that into practice?
Perhaps either if the superintendent would like to do that, or if you'd like to refer it to the Communication Committee to put forward a couple of proposals with how we might participate in community engagement.
Okay. Dr. Sutter, would you, would you mind thinking about that, and then letting us know if you think maybe? I think the Communication Committee would be great. Okay, then let's do that, let's remind the Communications Committee, we'll put that on our agenda for next week.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, it's bolded too, so just go over, you know, skip over. So just finishing up, as a reminder, we are video recording this meeting, if you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask that you not provide your home address, but rather give only, excuse me, the name of the municipality in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments, and are referred to by Law 0168 for further information regarding the video recording of our meetings. Madam Attorney will be our timekeeper for the three minutes. And anyone would like to address the board? Yes, please.
Hi, is it possible to shut off the video?
Excuse me?
Stop the recording, the video?
Yeah. So Brian, can we ask the, would you be stopped? Thank you. Any other members of the public like to address the board? Yes.
Good evening, everyone, Lamia, Parsippany, New Jersey. I'm sorry for what I'm going to say after the parent that just spoke, if it sounds celebratory to me, it's just I don't, like, don't feel hurt of what I'm saying, I'm sorry. Yesterday, many Muslims around the world celebrated Eid, and it's one of the most sacred holidays for us. It was such a wonderful day for our students and staff, it was just great for them the night before to wake up and say, "Mom, oh, we're all from school tomorrow," and it made me feel so proud. So I just want to thank you all for acknowledging that day, and actually acknowledging many of the Muslims to have the official day off. It does, your decision actually is a testament to your commitment to creating an inclusive and welcome environment for all. Another, so thank you for that, and we just have few refreshments just to say thank you on the table, so please, you know, for everyone else, if you want anything, please get up and have some. The other thing I just wanted to inquire about was the 2.5% that you had mentioned about the meal budget, will it be the same quantity for the students? Because.
It's a good question, because, no, I'm not supposed to answer.
Sorry, but, you know, we're having high schoolers now, and I think, you know, these kids, like, they eat. The other thing, I know, Dr. Sutter, thank you so much for getting back to me about the halal food, I just want to make sure that, like, where is it sourced from, because we do have halal specifications, especially when it comes to, like, chicken and beef. It's necessarily halal is, like, if anything that's not, it's vegetarian, not touched from pork is considered halal for us, but only chicken and beef is actually have to be from a source that is certified halal. So I just want to know, like, where is that coming from, and then with more, like, more elementary or middle school, whatever, will we begin the same thing or not? Lastly, I just want to know, like, for the upcoming new calendar, when is it going to be approved? So if we can entertain discussing the future Eid holidays, and as I discussed before, Muslims have two most sacred holidays in a year, and as we go by a lunar year, the second holiday is going to start becoming end of June, like, this year, we're celebrating, it's like June 17th, so if we have any snow days that are left, hopefully, if we're not using them from anything else, to kind of consider that June 17th on the calendar, and hopefully for the years to come, we can discuss what are those days, and I can just email them. Hopefully, I'm not up to the three-minute, but thank you so, thank you so much, and please enjoy yourself, and thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the, close the public session. Dr. Sutter, I'm not sure if you want to address any of those questions?
Ms. Arnold, unfortunately, I can't talk about personnel at this time, and I would like to thank Lamia for the refreshments, and thank you for your positive comments and your positive feedback. The food prices will, are going up ten cents, that's what we recommend, and it's ten cents, so it sounds a lot more when you say 2 point something percent, but it's, it's ten cents. That's what we proposed, the quantities will stay the same. I'll speak with Pomtanian about the source, where that comes from, and we'll have to get back to you on that. And our calendar is set for next year, so we're going to be meeting again in the summertime to speak about the following year's calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sutter. At this time, we are up for a roll call vote on the superintendent's bulletin, number 17, items 1 through 18, with addendum items 19 through 25 and read-ins. May I have a motion, please? Sheethol, seconded by Tim. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldaer?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Recuse on number four, and recuse on the bill list, yes to everything else? Okay, seeing no other business come before the board, motion to adjourn. Mrs. Mayer, seconded by Mrs. Chappell. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.